To order the Public Works and Engineering Services Committee meeting for Tuesday, April 22nd. Having already given the prayer and the pledge, we have a full quorum this morning with three members present. Gentlemen, have you had the opportunity to review the minutes from?
Yes, moved to accept.
So moved. Do you have any changes to today's agenda?
It's ready for your approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We'll move forward with it as is. We do have a presentation item, and Mr. Gordon is going to give that for us this morning.
This morning, we are recognizing these guys for winning the Plan of the Year for the state of Georgia. I'm gonna read something up here in Young Turner. I'm gonna read something off their website, because I know how to remember this. But Georgia Association of Water Professionals annually recognizes outstanding wastewater treatment facilities with its Wastewater Plan of the Year Award. The award recognizes facilities that have demonstrated exceptional efforts in managing, operating, and maintaining their facilities. The award is given in various categories based on the facility size and treatment type. Our plan is a six to nine and a half, or 9.9 million gallon plant, so we won the award for that category for, I guess, 2024, or 2025, 2024. And we want to recognize these guys. When we went to them and asked them to, that we wanted to put in for this award, I figured it'd be a little bit of a learning experience the first time to see what the state was looking for in their evaluation. But they took the bull by the horns, and they intended to win it their first shot. And I guess it should be no surprise to me, because if you've ever been to Little River Wastewater Treatment Plant, I've been going to water and wastewater treatment plants well over 20 years. And this is by far the best-looking, the cleanest plant of anyone I've ever, ever been to. These guys take a lot of pride in their work. They've done a great job, and we really appreciate them. And just wanted to take a minute to say, thank you, guys. Good job, and keep up the good work. The little plaque we get to hang up for winning the award for this year. So we can't win it again next year, but maybe in a couple of years. You only win it, every, 2026. That's the goal. Thank you. No eagle. We didn't get eagle. I don't.
We're not sorry.
But, but thank you. I guess we're gonna let them go back to work, because I need them operating a plant through the rest of this. Thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Congratulations, and thank you for keeping our citizens with water during the storm. We appreciate that. Okay, we'll move ahead to the debate agenda, and we will begin with Mr. Slaughter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have three encroachment agreements. First one is for 3125 Carolinoe, Caroline, I'm not sure how you say it. This is for a retaining wall, five and a half foot high, poured concrete retaining wall in the rear portions of this property. It is inside of our 10-foot drainage utility easement. Staff has recommended approval. They have signed the documents.
Moved to consent.
Second.
So moved. Next.
Next one I have for you is an easement encroachment for 790 Nut All Street. This is looking for permission to install a concrete pad in the rear inside property line, a pull deck. Also showing us being five foot off the rear property line. They are located inside the rear 10-foot drainage utility easement. Staff has recommended approval. All documents have been signed.
Moved to consent.
Second.
So moved. Next.
Next for you is for 4213 Columbia Road. This is for a drainage line, a private drainage line, to be put into a sewer easement. Staff has recommended approval.
Moved to consent.
Second.
So moved.
Next I have for you is an alcohol beverage license for Winston's Restaurant Group LLC, which is doing business as Winston's Tavern. This is across the street here in the premier. We have all required documents. Notice has been posted on the property. We have no known opposition to the license, and it does not require survey based on this location. Staff is recommending approval of the license.
Moved to consent.
So moved. Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Gordon.
Yes, the first item I have for you today is, is a purchase or replacement of an existing truck. We have a truck that's over 20 years old, has over 100,000 miles on it. This vehicle is kind of our, our workhorse of, of borderline repair and emergency repair. It houses a lot of our inventory and equipment we need to go out and, and do these repairs. So if, you know, a line breaks in the middle of the night, the guys can swing in, get this truck. It can pull equipment that we need. It can pull trailers with pipe on it. We did get, or attempted to get, three quotes on this. We did get it under state contract for $153,002.17. That is within budget. We had budgeted $225,000 for the vehicle to replace it. And it'll be paid for out of the Distribution Department funds, and staff recommends approval of this purchase.
Who are you doing with the old one?
Surplus in the old one.
Moved to consent.
Second.
So moved.
The, next one is an independent contractor agreement with environmental instrumentation and calibration. We received three quotes on repairing the bar screens. Oh, I skipped one. I'm sorry. Yeah, it stuck to the page. I'm sorry. It stuck to the page right in front of it. So, yeah, the second one is a rejection of a bid for the Crawford Creek generator. We budgeted $250,000 for this. It came in at 400, and the bid was $466,000. I truly believe this is a $250,000 contract. We can get it done for that. We're gonna kind of, we're gonna go back and relook at that and figure out how we can get it within budget. So staff is recommending rejection of this bid.
Moved to consent.
Second.
So moved. Next.
Now this one. This one is an independent contractor agreement with environmental instrumentation and calibration. We have bar screens that head in our wastewater plant that filter out basically any, any large items that can damage equipment and cause us issues in treating the plant, and these bar screens need repair from time to time. And it's time to do that maintenance on these. We did get three quotes to repair the bar screen at both Little River and Reed Creek. It's less than $100,000, so we just got for the utility contractor. So it just, we got it under three quotes through procurement, and the low quote was $72,930, and staff recommends approval.
That's worked into the budget every year?
Yes.
How big are the screens?
John, do you know?
Yeah. Moved to consent.
Second.
So moved. Next.
The next item is a change order for the Sugar Creek Booster Station. When this project was designed, we were under the impression that the septic drain field was in an open area by the cleanout. And when we got under construction and we cleared the site beside the fire station on Sugar Creek Drive, the drain field was actually in the woods, so it had large, huge trees growing on it. So I'm not really sure how it was working very well, but it, it was, it's kind of made a mess of the site. So we're gonna have, we got with the Health Department, we're gonna have to relocate that drain field. But we also found out that the original drain field and septic system was designed for four people in the Fire Department. They currently have 11, so we have to bring it up to size. So we're relocating the septic system. We're, we have to clear another site for the drain field and put in a drain field that handles this. Plus, the site is now with all the stuff from the drain field, we have to remove five foot of soils all the way across the whole site and dispose of that soil, so that's expensive. But it has turned into a large change order that is $542,031.25, and staff recommends approval as change order. Yes, basically. Yes, sir.
Biggest cost is getting the soils right to support the booster station.
Yes.
I understand.
Moved to consent.
Second.
So moved. Thank you. Morning, Mr. Titus.
Good morning. The first item we have is a public hearing on the establishment of Street Light Districts for Whispering Pines, Section 4B and 5B, and Jackson Heights Phase Two. We received a petition from the developer of these subdivisions for Street Light Districts. We reached out to Georgia Power and requested proposals for upfront installation costs and annual utility cost. Those numbers provided for you below. This is a public hearing. With your permission, we'd like to open up the public hearing, and staff will document any comments.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing for anyone who would like to speak on this. Being known, we'll close the public hearing.
The next item is Resolutions 25-03, 25-04, and 25-08 to establish Street Light Districts for Whispering Pines, Sections 4B and 5B, Jackson Heights Phase Two. Staff recommends approval.
Moved to consent.
Second.
So moved.
This next item is the Lighting Services.
Gotta go to debate.
Moved to debate. Correct my motion.
Thank you.
This next item is a Lighting Services Agreement with Georgia Power for corridor lighting on Horizon South Parkway. This is the proposal from Georgia Power for upfront installation costs and annual utility costs. The upfront installation cost of $49,800 would be reimbursed by TIA, and the $15,887.64 for energy costs would be paid annually at a TAVT. Staff recommends approval.
Moved to consent.
For pedestrian and roadway lighting.
So moved. Next.
The next item is a contract with Peak Pavement Marking for the fiscal year '24 and '25, Safety Striping Project B, in the amount of $72,438.64 for the portions for striping, restriping the portions of roadways as shown on the item. We've reached out to six vendors, received two quotes. This will be funded out of IPTF. Staff recommends approval.
Moved to consent.
Second.
So moved. Next.
This next item is contract with Utilicum for the purchase of the video wall, equipment, and workstations for the new building A Traffic Control Center. This would be for an entirely new wall, display wall, the equipment, processors, hardware, along with the three workstations to go in the new Traffic Control Center in the new building A. Total price is $702,241.18 to be paid out of the 2024 PFA bonds. Staff recommends approval.
We see many additions like this for building A, or is, or most of electronics and things like that worked into?
Arthur tell you about his budget?
Yeah.
We budget, I budget this in my total project budget, so these things that you're seeing, that Macy, I've already got those covered and basically in covered, so.
Have these been improved, like, to the state of the art, not just placing what we've?
Yes. So Randy and Kyle have looked through this, and there's, there's different TVs, there's different processors. And so we've been through this process for, gosh, 10 months, researching and meeting with vendors. So Kyle's team's done a good job, and they are very nice. Moved to consent.
So moved.
This next item is for the bid and contract with Cajun Construction for the 2025 Stormwater UV Rehabilitation Projects at the locations listed. These areas have sections of pipe that are corrugated metal pipe that have reached their end of life. They're, they're corroded. They're creating sinkholes. This is for the lining of those pipes for a total of 1,368 linear feet of storm drain pipe ranging from 18 inches to 48 inches. This is a much more economical and efficient method of rehabilitating pipe when you compare it to dig and replace the traditional method. Total contract amount is $283,884 to be funded out of SPOSS 2328. Staff recommends approval.
Moved to consent.
Second.
So moved. Next.
Next item is a contract with Southern Civil Solutions for the One Marshall Place Storm Drain UV Lining Rehabilitation Project. Similar to the contract you just approved, this is for the design of the UV lining of several storm drain systems in One Marshall Place. The total amount is $18,250. There's not a tremendous amount of design for UV lining project. However, they still require, we still require an erosion control plan, location maps, et cetera. So we still need to get that put together. Again, this is with Southern Civil Solutions. Staff recommends approval.
Moved to consent.
Next.
Next item is a contract with Blue Water Engineering Services for the Mill Branch Culvert Replacement Project. Staff received several calls from property owners along Mill Branch Road, off Lewiston Road. Each time we had significant storm events, the roadway would overtop. So we engaged Blue Water Engineering to do a high-level study to determine if the hydraulics met the hydrologic model for that reach. And it was determined that the two 72-inch culverts beneath Mill Branch are significantly undersized for the 25-year storm. So we requested a proposal from Blue Water to do a formal design for replacement in order to adequately size that system under Mill Branch. The total amount for this design contract is $79,400. Staff recommends approval.
Moved to consent.
Moved. Next.
This next item is a bid and contract with Triscapes LLC for construction of the Lakeside Park Rain Infrastructure Improvement Project. This is to rehabilitate the, it is two, three, I'm sorry. This is to rehabilitate three existing fire retention systems over at Lakeside Park and construct a new fire retention instruction, structure next to the parking lot and a permeable trail. This is through, partially funded through EPA's 319 grant. The total contract amount is $476,404.70. Approximately 50% of that will be reimbursed through the 319 grant. The contractor will have 135 days to complete the project. Staff recommends approval. Sorry, the remaining portion that's not reimbursed will be paid out of Stormwater Infrastructure.
Ken?
Second.
So moved.
This next item is Resolution 25-14 for Stormwater Compliance Fee Schedule revisions to include course and workshop fees as well as working without a land disturbance permit penalty. Staff currently puts on two courses. One is for the Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Commission, Level 1A and 1B certification and recertifications. And the other is a rain barrel workshop. The fees that we're proposing are to cover costs associated with putting on those workshops or courses. The, the third item or second item is for working without a land disturbance permit penalty. Basically, if you start work without a permit, then staff has a much more work to do in order to catch up on the front end with what's going on. So this is proposing that we double the land disturbance permit fee if they start without a permit. I know Mr. Slaughter and Ms. Jennings worked heavily on this, so questions. Bring Ms. Jennings up, and we can discuss.
This is only if someone begins work without a permit. We're not raising fees.
Correct.
The only fees that are being raised are actually establishing fees for classes that we're wanting to provide.
Right.
Ball requires people that are working to have certain licenses. We want to offer the class to get those folks in here, get them licensed so they can go work. We looked at our staff time, our material costs. The bulk of the fee is to cover the materials. I believe they get a green book, Katie Beth, green book, plus a class manual. It gets down to the rain barrel workshop. It literally covers the cost of the material. So it, we're not doing this to make money. We're doing it to educate the public.
How often do, happen often that people start without the permit?
Katie Beth tell you?
It's not uncommon, but... And this would be, this would apply to contractors and builders regularly and decided to start work anyway. A lot of them do have these certifications offered, and the state requires established requirements. So when they start without a permit, a lot of staff extra time to catch up, especially with regard to the plan already changed. Want to make paper match the earth.
So you're targeting the building, the builder community, and not, can the general public come? I guess they wouldn't.
They can, so anybody can come.
Anyone can attend. For the classes, we are targeting to help increase understanding and awareness.
And you'll reach out to associations?
Absolutely. We'll advertise.
Perfect. Your motion.
Debate.
This debate item?
Debate item. Just throw that out there before you make your motion.
If somebody starts without permission, then the fee's.
Correct. And this is similar to what we do in building standards. They have that exact same caveat.
Right.
Start without your permit, you pay double the fee.
But the way we wrote it was subject to a double fee. And that is because if you have someone that does it on accident, they just don't know. And that's, you know, we can work, staff can work with them if, if it's, you know, minor. But if we have these bad characters that continue to do it over and over, that's when...
Got enough of a fee for a bad character?
But Mr. Driver will tell us that our fees can only cover our cost. We're not here to make money off of these fees. We're here to cover the cost of doing business, so it's not a, it's not a penalty to cover our additional work. The other, the punishment would be having code enforcement go out and issue a citation for working without a permit, and then the fee.
Moved to consent, uh, moved to debate, excuse me.
Second.
So moved. Thank you.
This next item is Resolution 25-12 and Project Delivery Agreement with GDOT for TIA II Group Six roadway resurfacing for the roadways listed below. This is the Project Delivery Agreement with GDOT for Columbia County to deliver these projects, as well as a resolution identifying who, on behalf of the county, can sign for the county. Staff recommends approval.
Are we making up any of the lost time? I know you said at some point we were like six months behind on resurfacing projects because of the delay with the debris and storms, so.
Well, we have had really good weather, knock on wood. I know rain's coming later this week, but we've had really good weather for the past month or so. So they're doing well, but we're still gonna be months behind before we get back in line.
This is Group Six. How many groups are there?
There's one more after this.
Moved to consent.
So moved.
This next item is for the bid and contract with Beams Contracting for the rehabilitation of multiple roads on Fort Eisenhower. This is a rebid. In, on October 5th, 2021, the county entered into an intergovernmental support agreement with then Fort Gordon, now Fort Eisenhower. Basically, the county acts as a procurement or financial agent on behalf of the base. So the base tells us what roads they need rehabilitated. We put together a package. We advertise that we contract with a contractor like Beams, and then issue them a notice to proceed to do the work. Ford oversees it and reimburses us. We pay the contractor, and they reimburse us for the work. It's a way to apply economies of scale so they can get their roadways resurfaced at a better, better price. The total contract amount is $3,241,864.42. Again, we will be reimbursed for everything that the fort approves the contractor to do, plus an additional 8% administrative fee for the county's time working on this. Staff recommends approval. The funding will come out of TAVT first.
Something that we typically do.
This will be our second. The first project we did was an emergency project on Rain's Road where the roadway blew out 2022. And that's the only project we've done. We tried to advertise this project last year, mid-last year, and the timelines and the funding did not work out with the fort. We've re-advertised, and we've been successful getting this one negotiated with the contractor and ready for your approval.
I'll make sure that understands your question. The agreement that we have with Fort Eisenhower?
Mm-hmm.
Basically, roadwork. I mean, we manage the project.
And they're, when they reimburse on the receivable, that timeline is, we don't, is there a significant delay ever, or they?
Jacob here. Jacob, will you walk up? So Jacob works in our pre-construction department, and he's been spearheading this for us. Jacob Steiner.
Good morning, everyone. How are you?
Morning.
So the Fort Eisenhower basically receives funding on a quarterly basis throughout the federal year through what is called the one-to-end list. So the Department of Public Works, which controls construction across the entire base, they have to prioritize their money. So we, our best approach, working with DPW and trying to understand how their funding works with how fluid federal funds are, though, we're moving to authorize the full amount of the project. But right now, they only know that they can confidently deliver the first portion of the bid. We went ahead and we bid the project, got the full amount for each of the roadways, and got that approved so that way the fort could go ahead and, and move and work with Congress to get the actual funding for the rest of the roadways. Basically, once, once we present them that we're ready to move forward, they'll be able to issue and fund us directly. And it's gonna work where, once the roadway is complete, they will then pay the lump sum fee, and we should get that back in a relatively fast manner. Did I answer your timeline in terms of, in terms of timeline?
Yes.
So they're gonna, they have 120 days from the time that we issued the notice to proceed to go ahead and complete the very first roadway. That will give the fort time to mobilize to receive the rest of the funding. And by the time, end of that first 120 days, we will know exactly which roadways we're going to be able to fund for the rest of the contract, not to exceed the amount that you see in your bid item.
I understand.
Thank you.
Already voted? Moved to consent.
So moved.
This next item is a bid and contract with Southern Asphalt for Wildwood Park Resurfacing, basically to resurface all the roads in Wildwood Park. This includes Holloway Road, Dogwood Lane, Boat Ramp Road, Cedar Point, and the Disc Golf Road resurfacing. It also includes Fog Seal and the Disc Golf Parking Lot and Main Boat Ramp Parking, restriping everything. Total amount is for $737,459.50. Staff recommends approval. Be funded out of TAVT.
Miles is this? You don't know, then that's cool.
I can get that for you and send you an email right after committee.
They could, dividing the dollars into the miles. Moved to consent.
Second.
So moved. Next.
This next item is a contract with Pond and Company for preliminary through final design services related to the Clary Cut Road, Old Union Road project. This is a TIA II project. Pond has already been through the concept and traffic analysis phase. Staff recommended, requested that they issue, they provide a proposal for preliminary through final design services to deliver this project. The total proposal amount is $689,722, and to be funded out of TIA II. Staff recommends approval.
Moved to consent.
Second.
So moved. Last one.
And the final item is acceptance of improvements in Highland Lakes West, Section 1, to include the road, storm, water, and sewer, along with the right-of-way and easements associated with those improvements as specified on the plat by agency surveying dated March 12th, 2025. All the ponds shown on the plat remain private, known by the HOA. Staff recommends approval.
Second.
So moved. Thank you. You have any legal matters? Staff reports, Mr. Gordon.
Yes, I've included the year-to-date budget report and the water and sewer construction project reports for you to review. And I'm preparing. project reports for you to review and I'm prepared to answer any questions you may have.
I don't have any, sir.
And Titus?
Yes, we have the roadway projects report and roadway resurfacing report for your review. Answer any questions.
No questions, thank you. Do you have one person that would like to speak from the public this morning? Reagan Creighton. And we have one executive session item. Pleasure on that.
I make a motion, we move to the full board.
Second.
So moved. We have no other items. We will adjourn at 9:20.